Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Richard. My firm and I serve as legal counsel to the Lamar County Regional Solid Waste Management Authority. As advertised in the public notice for tonight's hearing, this public hearing concerns the proposed expansion of the existing Cedar Grove Municipal Solid Waste Landfill, which is owned by the Solid Waste Authority, onto contiguous property also owned by the Solid Waste Authority, to create additional solid waste disposal capacity in the Cedar Grove landfill for its future operation. The site of the Cedar Grove landfill and expansion area are located at 172 Roger Brown Drive, here in Barnesville, Georgia. The Cedar Grove landfill is operated under State of Georgia's Solid Waste Handling Permit Number 085-007-D is a Delta MSWL. The Cedar Grove landfill receives only municipal solid waste as defined in the Solid Waste Act, which generally consists of solid waste from households and other residential properties, commercial businesses, government buildings, similar waste from manufacturing and industrial facilities, and construction or demolition waste. No regulated hazardous waste materials are accepted at the Cedar Grove landfill. The proposed expansion is currently pending before the Environmental Protection Division in the form of a permit application for a modification to that existing landfill permit. Under applicable provisions of the Georgia Solid Waste Management Act, the purpose of this public hearing, in addition to providing some basic information about the proposed Cedar Grove landfill expansion, for the benefit of attendees who may not be familiar with the project, is to provide members of the public an opportunity for input through comments they may wish to make tonight concerning this proposed expansion of the Cedar Grove landfill. A transcript of this public hearing concerning the proposed expansion of the Cedar Grove landfill and all such comments will be provided to the Georgia EPD for its consideration prior to EPD making a final decision with the expectation to issue into their requested permit modification. This public hearing is not an opportunity for a broad public question and answer session, and any comment should be directed to the Cedar Grove landfill and this proposed expansion of the Cedar Grove landfill. Following my introduction, the engineer for the project will provide a summary explanation of the proposed Cedar Grove landfill expansion, its location relative to the existing landfill boundary, and an explanation of the engineering and operational components of the landfill in the expansion area where solid waste will be disposed. Following that explanation, you will be provided an opportunity for any comments. In addition, stated in the notice of public hearing, I will explain that there is an opportunity afforded under the Georgia Solid Waste Act for interested citizens to initiate and engage in a facility issues negotiation process. There is also a handout on the table, which you may want to take, that contains the requirements for that process to be initiated and the details governing that process if it were initiated. For some additional background, the Cedar Grove landfill is operated in conjunction with the Solid Waste Authority by a company named Cedar Grove Landfill LLC, which is a company experienced in the operation of similar municipal solid waste landfills. After a public hearing in July 2001, the Solid Waste Authority entered into a contractual landfill operation agreement with Cedar Grove Landfill LLC for the day-to-day operation of the Cedar Grove landfill. That agreement contemplates this current proposed modification to the existing Cedar Grove landfill permit and this proposed expansion to allow for additional permitted waste disposal capacity for Cedar Grove landfill's continued future operation and for the continued reclamation of the town's old unlined landfill into lined landfill cells. This proposed expansion is also expressly described, included, and approved in the Lamar County and City of Milner Joint Solid Waste Management Plan dated June 2021, officially adopted by the county and the city in July 2021 after a public hearing. The Solid Waste Management Plan has not been amended or modified since that time. The consistency of this expansion of the Cedar Grove landfill with that approved joint solid waste management plan of Lamar County and the City of Milner will be communicated and verified in writing to the Georgia Environmental Protection Division in the manner contemplated by the Solid Waste Act. The Cedar Grove landfill and this proposed expansion of the landfill's waste disposal capacity are not a subject of the current Lamar County Superior for legal proceedings you may be aware of between Lamar County and the Solid Waste Authority. And that position has been expressly acknowledged by the attorneys for the county in those legal proceedings. Although the waste and energy facility being developed by the Solid Waste Authority is expected to receive certain amounts of solid waste materials for processing in that facility, that facility is not otherwise a subject for or relevant to tonight's public hearing or comments during this hearing. Again, the subject matter of this hearing is the proposed expansion of the Cedar Grove landfill to create additional waste disposal capacity. To provide a brief explanation concerning the state permitting process, the application for this permit modification and extensive hydrogeologic assessment report for the proposed expansion area was submitted to the Environmental Protection Division in December 2022. The Environmental Protection Division has since approved the proposed expansion area as being geologically and hydrogeologically suited for permitting and development of the proposed expansion. The Environmental Protection Division has also renewed and approved the proposed design and engineering plans for the Cedar Grove landfill expansion referred to as the "design and operation plan." During the Georgia Environmental Protection Division permitting process, a public meeting was noticed and held in November 2022 by the Solid Waste Authority during which this proposed expansion permit modification was explained to the public in attendance at that time. A public hearing was also held when the joint solid waste management plan was adopted by Lamar County and the City of Milner approving this proposed expansion of the Cedar Grove landfill. At this point, I'd like to introduce Jeff Brown as the engineer for the expansion project to provide a summary explanation of that project.
Thank you, John. I'm glad I don't have to type because it is cold in here, so I'm glad to see your fingers moving. I'm going to move this easel a little closer so we don't have to... Some of this information is not new to any of y'all. If you've followed this project, as I've heard some of y'all I've followed for a while, you know all about landfills and how they work, but some of this may be new. So I'm going to go over that just so you'll be aware and can ask questions about that. The Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division Solid Waste Management Program is who permits, who issues solid waste handling permits. And for this public hearing, we're discussing the permit to be issued for the Cedar Grove MSW landfill. MSW stands for Municipal Solid Waste, if you didn't know that, which basically means household garbage. EPD designates different types of landfills: inert, landfills, and those usually will take limbs and stumps and bricks and concrete. C and D, which stands for construction and demolition, and those landfills will take construction and demolition debris from houses being built or buildings being torn down, two-by-fours and block and brick and rubble, drywall. Neither inert or C and D landfills, neither of those are lined, they don't have a liner. The next category is industrial landfills. Those usually come from manufacturing processes or specific industries, and some of those are lined, some are not. It depends on when experimented and the type of waste stream that goes into those industrial landfills. Then MSW landfills, which I mentioned, stands for Municipal Solid Waste, is the next category, and then hazardous waste landfills. Both MSW and hazardous waste landfills require liner systems. There are 55 to 60 MSW landfills in Georgia, and there are no hazardous waste landfills in Georgia. The federal government passed the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act back in the late 80s. Commonly called subtitle D regulations were added effective in 1988, becoming tweaked until 1991. And about that time, since all the states have to develop their own solid waste regulations, Georgia passed the Solid Waste Management Act in 1990. Both of those have been amended since that time, but Georgia EPD uses that act to develop their rules and regulations that we have to follow. They also issue guidance documents, and all of those things help applicants understand what EPD is looking for in order to issue a permit. In order to receive a permit, the applicant has to submit an application with supporting documents and a demonstration that the site is suitable, like John mentioned, for a solid waste facility. And that is true for a new site or for the case of a major modification, which is what an expansion is out of landfill. In this, in this case, the Cedar Grove landfill has issued that, or has submitted that application for an expansion for a major modification, and it follows the requirements of the Solid Waste Act, the Georgia EPD regulations, and the guidance documents. With their application, the Solid Waste Authority submitted what is called a hydrogeologic assessment report, or HAR, that John mentioned. And this is prepared by a professional geologist, and it is a very specific analysis of the selected site, included drilled boardings into the ground that tells us how deep groundwater is, how deep rock is, and there's a lot more to the report that that includes. And the purpose of that HAR is to demonstrate the site or an expansion of the site is suitable. If Georgia EPD is satisfied with this demonstration, they will issue a letter of site suitability. After the issuance of that letter of site suitability, the applicant will then submit a set of plans, and that is called the design and operations plan that John mentioned. And those will be submitted to Georgia EPD for approval. In the case of this expansion, these plans are 44 sheets and a book of design calculations that support those. Once EPD is satisfied that those plans properly show how the site will be designed and operated and are incorporated with the Solid Waste Act and their regulations, they will indicate that their review is complete, and the applicant will know that a permit is pending. As part of the final requirements for EPD to issue the permit, the applicant is required to hold a public hearing. This whole process can take two to four years depending on the complexity of the project. So I wanted to show a little bit about the site as well as what a typical MSW landfill looks like. And I'm not loading these up, it's raining, so... I'm going to have to turn today. So this is the site, if you're familiar with where the site is off Roger Brown Drive. It comes off Industrial Road. This area that I'm marking with my finger here is the existing landfill. This area is the southwest expanded part, and this area is the east expanded part of the application. Can I see that?
Can you show us where the scale house is for reference?
Yeah, so the entrance is here, and then this is the scale house right here.
Here's Five Points Road for reference.
Five Points is out here. It's off of that.
How far is it going to be from the Five Points Road to the field itself?
That's a good question. We have to measure that, but...
That's a good question.
It's, it's at least as wide as this piece of property.
That ain't, that ain't giving me no footage.
It's over 700 feet.
So less than a mile.
Yes, it's less than a mile.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That should not be allowed.
You're, you're welcome to, when it's, your name's called, to make all of those comments, but that's not my determination.
So the expansion is going east?
Correct. There's a portion of the expansion that's going east, and there's a portion of the expansion that's going southwest.
So it's two different tracks that are going to be expanded to?
They're all a combined track, but yes, there's two different parts to it. That's correct.
What is the acreage that's going to compensate this expansion?
So the existing facility is about 63, plus or minus 63 acres.
The new point that you want to do, how many acres is that going to?
Yeah, that's what I was, sorry, I was getting to that. So this side is about 10 and a half acres, and this side is about 60 acres. So about 70. About 60 acres. 60? So it's about 70 total acres that's added to the 63 or so that's there.
Where's the access point going to be? Is it still going to be off Roger Brown and Industrial? Or are you going to get another access point?
Same access point, same scale house.
No access point off Five Points?
No.
But that 60 acres over there is going to be near Five Points, right?
Um, I think it's relative to how I would say near it because there's a valley in between, and it's at least this far over to Five Points. Like we, the site couldn't get there from Five Points because there's several property owners in between.
How about the order?
I'm sorry?
How about the order?
It's already on Five Points.
Yeah, it's already, it's gone forward.
I'm, I'm showing you the site. I can't show odor, but the site is required as part of their operations plan to control vectors of odors. If they have a bitter violation, then that's something that EPD...
Who could give us that answer saying you can't?
That's what I'm saying. EPD will, is responsible.
Could you all provide it for us instead of us going through EPD?
Provide what?
What the distance is going to be as far as the order? I live on Five Points Road, and I have a problem with it already. That's reason I'm here. That's going to be closer than where I am at the present time. I'm just trying to see how far you think it's going to stretch out?
Distance and odor are two different things. So I could tell you a distance to Five Points, but I can't tell you because of the wind shift, the type of waste they take, different times of the day, whether or not there's been cover. All of those things affect odor, so distance and odor aren't necessarily...
The closer the Five Points is going to be, the stronger the odor is going to be.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't want to be rude, but all of these questions are...
Go over it on the record.
And so if you haven't signed up to ask a question, I'll, I'll answer anything I can, or John will. But if you'll state your name if you're not signed up, just so that we'll have that, so EPD will know. And EPD would have your...
I'm trying to...
Okay, so they'll have your name in the record.
I have a question.
Okay, what text, tell me your name.
The county has an ordinance 2008-02.
Okay.
Can I read this to you?
You have to state your name.
Elaine Hallad, I am on the list, but I, we're talking about Five Points Road here, so this would affect...
We're talking rather the expansion than the landfill.
Yes. No portion of a new facility or expansion of an existing facility shall be located within one mile radius, which contains 50 or more residential dwellings. The radius shall be measured in a straight line from the boundary of the property to be used for the facility. You already got 58 homes within a mile of the dock. And now you're going to add more land and include more homes like these guys on Five Points Road. You have an ordinance that's not being followed.
Okay, that, that's your comment. Thank you.
Here's another question, and I'm signed up.
Would you say your name?
Well, you're, you're, you're giving this to the, for us to look at, and you're telling us what it is. We really can't see it. I mean, I don't want you to bring it up to me, but...
I mean, you're welcome to come up here if that...
Well, like, I shouldn't have to. I mean, we should have had a nice screen. Nothing against you, but what I'm saying is, I mean, you're...
Guarding.
The, the duck is dug, is it not? Is there not holding the ground already where the proposed, proposed site is?
No.
You sure about that?
Yes. Yeah, we do not have a solid waste handling permit for the proposed site. Now, there are two surface mining areas where they're borrowing soil.
Okay, okay.
And I apologize...
No, that's fine, that's fine.
...a big screen because the rules don't say you have to have a big screen. It's also they have to have the public hearing.
That's fine, that's fine.
We meet in different places depending on where they...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Again, one of the things that I mentioned was some of y'all may know a lot about landfills if you've been following it in particular, but this is just for anybody who doesn't know how MSW landfill is constructed. And this particular land, this particular typical section is also true of the existing permitted site. It is not true of the 04 permit of the waste that they're removing and reclaiming because it does not have a liner, so they're digging that up to go in it. But the existing landfill that's in the road that's being expanded does have this...
Which are?
200-foot upper areas.
Monitoring wells for groundwater and methane.
Clay liner and a plastic liner that's underneath. If y'all can hear me over the train, just tell me. And so this is how solid waste is buried. We have a leachate collection system, which is rain, it rains on landfills, and so that percolates down through trash, and it's collected at the bottom. And that, that leachate is hauled and pumped to POTW, publicly owned, treatment works. And then the site has to be covered. It also has a liner. Some sites will weld the liner of the covering, the landfill cap, to the base liner. Some do not, depends on how it was constructed. And then there's also downgrading groundwater wells. And the new guidance documents for methane, 2015, I think, require that landfill probes go all the way to groundwater. It didn't used to have to do that. Used to ground methane probes only went as deep as however deep the landfill was. Now they've got all the way to groundwater. So, yes.
I'm Dean Gore.
Tell me your name again.
I'm Dean Gore.
Okay.
I've got a question. I see you have a liner here. How high, how high are you going to go? The mud that's laying up here right now is quite high. How high will you go on that?
So to answer that, I will go back here because you're, I can hear your next question coming. The existing landfill is permitted to elevation 960, and the expanded landfill is permitted to elevation 960. So the expanded landfill will not add any height to the existing permitted landfill, and the reason for that is simple geometry. The rules require the slope being a certain elevation, and this site is permitted at 41. So because of the narrow, the width across the existing site, that would control the, the height of that. So if you see the plans, they will say horizontal and vertical expansion. The reason they say that is because horizontal means there's additional disposal area, and the vertical typically means it's getting taller. But what's on, what's getting taller is this slope because this would lay against this slope and this slope. But it doesn't actually get higher for its max elevation for what's permitted now. Does that make sense? I don't have anything to draw on. Yes.
So I have two questions. I apologize. My name is Jason Lovett.
Okay.
And so I've been to many of these over the course of 35 years. Is there a member of the EPD here today?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not there anymore.
I find that highly...
I don't know anybody here, but I don't think there's anybody.
Okay.
You might, would EPD here?
Second question is, are you telling me that after this, there will be no vertical expansions?
If I said that, I missed focus. I, I didn't say that.
You didn't say that. So typically, these are built like a pyramid, where you build a base, and you build a base larger so that you continue on a vertical expansion. But what you just said is we're maxing out at 964. Are, are you anticipating, or are you stating here today that there will be no vertical expansions past what's being permitted here today?
What I'm saying is the application that we have applied for and that EPD is considering, the current design and operation plan does not go any higher than the existing permitted landfill is, is permitted for, which is 960.
Okay, so before you had indicated there would be no vertical expansion past 960. Is that what you're indicating?
This, in this design and operation plan, there will not be... This will not, this is not currently permitted to go higher than 960.
That wasn't what I was...
Both in the expansion and the existing.
Okay.
I can't predict the future. This application that we're having a hearing for today will not go higher than 960. That's what's been submitted to EPD.
Thank you.
What is the current linear feet right now?
I don't mean to cut you off, but she raised her hand, so if you would state your name.
Ashley Gillis, so I hear someone Jason's saying. So you're saying this specific one is not going to go past that 960?
Correct.
In the future, we could, they could apply for another permit and go higher?
That's not my decision to make or what this hearing is about. Solid Waste Authority has, has not applied for that. Yes.
But what's the linear feet right now?
What's the linear feet?
Like, right now, we're looking at a trailer for Travis Mountain. How tall is it today?
Um, I, I do not know. I, I don't know. I think it's around 920, maybe?
What, 920 feet?
Yes, 920. I'm, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's like a mountain out there, you know? Every one of them is like a mountain, so it's got to be more than nine feet. Kind of like I heard.
That's above 60.
I'm ready.
So you, you can't see it on here because it's too small. But yeah, that doesn't mean it's 960 feet. That doesn't mean this is 960 feet. It means the elevation is 960 feet above 60.
Right.
Yes.
Susan White, how long before the current landfill will be at maximum height?
You mean if this, if the expansion were not permitted?
What we have currently, if it's at 920, how long will it take it to get to 960?
Um, and I would defer to Curtis, who is the engineer for the Solid Waste Authority. I would expect that would be two and a half years. That's not right. Based on the amount of, the reason I'm not trying to dodge your question is just if they take a certain amount of tons per day and then cut in half, then it will take longer. If they take a certain amount of tons per day and it's filled, then it will take less time. But at the current rate, it'll probably be about two and a half years.
So does that mean in two and a half years, the current landfill is full? Is that what that means?
Without the expansion in... There, there's my... Right here to that answer, and that is because if you, if any of you have been to the site. So you know this is the existing waste that's not lined, that has to be dug up and moved. So to dig it up and move it, we haven't developed hovering technology yet. So we have to put that somewhere in order to come back and line this. So that amount of waste would all go back into the landfill too. So without the expansion, it may be less than two and a half years. And that's because the first part of the expansion over here would allow us to create space to put the existing waste into and then come back and line that area. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yes.
I've got two questions. How much of that take are you talking about, or coming from other counties and other states other than Lamar County? Are we making any money off of, that it's coming here from other counties and other states?
I don't think there's any coming from other states.
I've seen Alabama truck there.
Well, the, the operator who runs the site has sites in Alabama, so that may have been the only reason. But as far as I know, they're not taking any from other states. Now, from other counties, they do, and of course, the Solid Waste Authority is a regional authority. And of course, the solid waste authority is a regional authority. So since day one, they've taken waste from other surrounding counties. So, but I, I don't know how that balance is spread.
Not as much as Amways is taking that because they're taking the whole, a city of Pitt will trash now. So that's why our landfill is building up like it is now because just that one city, everyone that lives in that city in Pittville, their, all their trash has come to us. So not counting all these other cities that's come to us. So, you know, that's probably trash in one city, uh, Pittville, that's big. So that's why we're filling out.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sorry, we just.
I got you said treats them off.
Elena, hold on. You're representing Cedar Grove LLC?
Yes.
Now, that is Amways, is it not?
They are wholly owned by Amways, yes.
So you, you would, this, this expansion is wanting to be done by Amways.
No, the, the expansion is. Expansion is being done by the Lamar County Regional Solid Waste.
Or Amways.
No, not for Amways.
Quit squinting hairs.
I, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm just, they have an operating agreement to operate for the solid waste authority. And the solid waste authority is who applied for the expansion.
So are they still collecting thirty eight dollars a ton?
I, that's not my.
It's a lot of money that families don't save a penny of.
Don't know the answer to either one of those questions. I'm sorry. Yes.
Can you, um, redo that? Can you tell me the permit number again?
Um, zero, yeah, zero eight five.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Okay.
Permit number zero eight five.
Hold on, stop it right there. So oh eighty five is county.
Okay.
So each, everything in Lamar County will be oh eighty five.
Dash zero zero seven.
Seven, zero zero seven is the seventh solid waste permit in that county.
Okay.
D is in Delta. M S W L close.
And all of them have a D? And I don't, Curtis, what did, do we know what the D stands for? Disposal?
Subtitle D.
Subtitle D, okay.
Previously it was S L.
Um, and then, uh, as he said, it ends in M S W L. So if you look at the oh eighty five, oh oh four permit, it, it just has an L in parentheses. Or S L, uh, in parentheses, which was sanitary. And it, is it Helena?
U N.
Uh, U N. Um, so you refer to it as a dump before. And that's, that's very common language. And the reason that's very common language is because that is what we used to have with dumps. Um, that, uh, if you're familiar with the Book of Job, who sat on an ash heap which was burning, uh, burning trash. So we used to burn trash. We used to, um, have trench fill landfills, um, where you dig a trench, leave the dirt mound in between, dig another trench, fill up the waste. And then they came up with the bright idea to have dumps. And so that's where that, uh, name popularized from. But we don't dump anymore because dumps don't have liners. These have liners and leachate collections.
Go ahead. You don't, okay, Donald Martin, I'm on the list. If this goes through and this permit is approved, okay? Those trucks going into the landfill, I'm using dump, I'm saying landfill.
Okay.
Is there any separation process before it hits that? I mean, the trucks are just going in and they dumping it and they pushing it in and you're getting everything from a washer dryer to a five gallon bucket to household waste to.
Car batteries?
To, and I'm gonna say that because I've been out there and there's no separation that I see. John Doe at the window, have you guys, the, the, what do you wanna call it? The employee, they'll ask you, you have any batteries? I can say no one had twelve tons probably. Going there and dumping, dumping it in an open top container. You'd never know what's going big up. Then Bubba's gonna pick it up in a truck. He's gonna take it out there and dump it in there. You got lithium batteries out there which are cause fire. You got lead acid battery, you got a mixture. Now you're creating hazardous material situations, potential heat. Now you also have where I have called in on the dump being on fire. It burnt for several hours before I called it in. You know how long it takes to put out a dump fire?
I did.
It takes out a lot, takes quite a while.
Can I, can I?
It burns down. But my question is, but my, my question.
I'd like to answer him.
My, my question is, is everything gonna be dumped into this? Is there a separation process? Because I thought, what you were saying earlier, like there's gonna be a separation. Like you're not gonna find plywood in two by fours and sheet rock and things like that middle. You're gonna have household garbage.
Sure. I'd be, I'd be happy to address all of those things. Um, so when I went through the list of types of landfills, inert, C and D, M S W, each, as you go through each one, they can all take the lower part of that waste. So M S W landfills can take C and D waste. C and D landfills can take inert waste. Um, so they have, um, convenience separation areas where if you know ahead of time that you have a washer that you wanna drop off or, uh, rock or mounds or something like that. But also, um, you can go to the post office and mail something. And they'll say, do you have any lithium batteries in here? And you said, no. And they'll mail that.
Well, my question is.
When you have lithium batteries.
Is that the post office right there?
But what the post office doesn't do is rip open that box and look and see if you were lying. But the operators at Cedar Grove Landfill are trained and they have to go to a training operation to get certified.
To, to open up what?
That they pull apart all of that waste as they spread it, they look at it. And if they find things that aren't allowed, they will remove those like tires you can't. And out of that way, you can take tires in Georgia, you can't take tires in landfills. So if they find tires in there, they will take those out and separate them. But Georgia E P D also considers small quantities of, um, you, you know, leftover antifreeze or something like that as common household hazardous waste. And that's the reason for the liner system. Um, but batteries and battery fires are a new thing that all landfills are dealing with. And that's been added recently to the operator training certification course. Just look for those kind of things because.
I, I, I'll tell you this, times I've been at landfill. Of course, I've got back on the hill.
You own the disposal.
But I can tell you what's getting done then. Proportions wise, ninety nine percent of it ain't getting sorted.
Are you hiding things in the?
I, I just, I.
What? Are you hiding things in the trucks?
I don't hide it. I ain't hiding nothing. I'm just saying. We're trying, we're, we're trying to permit a landfill expansion here. And you gave an impression to me that there was only a certain amount type of garbage or waste that was gonna go into this new area if it's approved. And that's not what I'm gathering. Because I've seen it out there, they just put it all in one. And I've been at dumps in Alabama too. I've seen what goes into it. You know, plastic, tires, washing machines, bicycles. It all just goes and they dig the hole in it. And I tell you, we're.
All I can tell you is that they have.
Let me, let me, let me, let me finish. I'm just trying to.
Don't what you told me.
What you're saying is like, there's gonna be sorted. That's what the question I got. But I don't think it's gonna be sorted.
I don't think they do any, any pre-sorting from the truck at the scale outs to the disposal area. But the operator who is running over that with a compactor or a D six, they can remove waste out of there if it's not allowed to be buried.
They don't.
I don't think you're gonna see a guy on the map and get out of a big unit and go out there and pull a tire out. It ain't gonna happen.
I would disagree with you because I've seen it happen.
I, I haven't seen it happen at this one.
How, how are you there every day?
No. I go by it twice a day. Say this.
To the disposal place?
No, I don't go in there. Got no need to go in there.
So it can happen.
But let's not fight about that.
Okay.
If you, if you wanna get, tell us, tell us, we can.
James Hyde. Um, I would like you to clarify your previous statement and give me the hierarchy again of landfills.
The type, the different types of landfills?
Uh, well, and, and the order, because what you said was that a lower order landfill can accept or a high order landfill can accept the lower order stuff as well.
That, correct.
So is a municipal solid waste disposal the highest?
No, hazardous would be the highest and they don't.
And be municipal?
We have some hazardous waste handling and some hazardous waste processing facilities in Georgia. But there aren't any hazardous waste landfills.
But so is an inert landfill lower than an M S W?
Yes.
So any law that applies to an inert landfill would by association also apply to an M S W?
Yes, but there are some, um, there's a little variability in that because an M S W landfill doesn't wanna take a lot of stumps and limbs and, um, organic matter because organic matter breaks down and produces more methane and it's also more likely to have fires. So a lot of times they'll separate those in gr- new grinding operations beforehand. So yes and no.
Okay.
You may not be aware, but you would, um, I would think.
Would you say?
Dixie Benson, I'm at three ninety nine Grove Street, so it's in my front yard. Um, what counties exactly are we accepting waste from? Can you name them?
I can't name them as I sit here right now. I don't know.
You wouldn't have any idea, would you?
I, I don't know. I would have to look at the, a disposal report to know that. That isn't really where.
I would be interested about how, I mean, I understand it's a regional, but I would be curious to know how many, um, surrounding counties. And it's fine if they're more rural, there's not as much trash that's going in. But you move toward those high density areas and you're going, you're, you're going to have a lot of trash. But then you're also going to have a lot of the, um, building and demolition and things like that as well. Living in.
Sure, as, as home construction goes up, you get more C and D waste. Like, as I said in, in part of my opening remarks, there are fifty five to sixty M S W landfills in Georgia. And there's a hundred and fifty nine counties in Georgia. So there's one landfill in every county. So there are a lot, there are multiple regional landfills. Some that aren't called regional, but act as regional. So, um, yes. Um, I'm gonna call this gentleman back here because he hasn't said anything yet.
White Fleming, does the ordinance anywhere stipulate what counties are in the Lamar County regional area?
I don't know that that's in there. Um, one of the attorneys might know that or Curtis might know that.
I can clarify.
Oh, okay.
Regional has nothing to do with where trash comes from at all. Regional is a designation in state law to say that more than one entity can be a part of this solid waste authority.
So the, the regional solid waste management plan does not identify which county.
I don't know about the, that, that plan in particular, but a regional solid waste authority only means that two counties or a county and some cities or whatever are part of it. It has nothing to do with where the trash comes from.
So does that mean that our landfill can take trash from Shetega County up in North Georgia or from, uh, Wayne County down in Southeast Georgia?
Can they?
Yes.
Uh, do they? Depends on the price of diesel fuel. So they, they have to pass several, if they came from Shetega or Wayne, they would pass several landfills on the way. And it would cost them a lot more to dispose at Lamar, at Cedar Grove than the several that they've had. Yes, sir.
Dean Gore, the cells that you are planning on wanting to build, where are you gonna get the dirt out to come from?
Um, so good question. Uh, this area, um, can be excavated to within a certain distance of groundwater. So we'll get some of the dirt from right here where those cells are.
That's from no, that, that area, I've planted all that area out there. So I know what the area looks like. And, uh, you're gonna get a whole lot of dirt out of that area. And furthermore, when you start pulling.
Well, you asked me a question, then let me finish.
All right, I'm sorry.
Uh, we have a bar area here and a bar area here. And we also can take soil. We can import soil. So that's where we'll get soils to do.
With the, with the height of the, uh, cell that you're putting towards the Five Points Road, would they'll be able to see it from Five Points Road?
Uh, the, the height of this air, this little area is actually lower than this one. So I'm not, I'm concerned. Um, if you can see that, can you see this?
For Grove Street, you most certainly can.
Oh, I know you can from Grove Street, but from Five Points, I don't know if you can or not.
Closer Five Points, are you ready to see it?
It's, it's logical.
This is got, this, uh, stream that's here that's going down the hills. So this is actually lower than this, so I don't know that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I had the pleasure of going to see Johnny for two and a half years ago. There was another area that he sat and told us was also gonna be included in future expansion. And that would be the, let me point it out to you. He was quite precise. That was the linear property. He basically insinuating, sinuated that the linear property, they may have prior first refusal.
So the linear trust?
Yes.
Property over here?
Not here.
Okay.
Okay. So you got High, Five Points Road here. So if they acquired the linear family trust and now you've got this bigger base, how high will Trader Park, Trash Mountain be?
Uh, Trash Mountain, can we sell tickets for that? Um, there is a stream across there that we could not cross. If they acquired all of this property over here. They couldn't just lay over that stream that's over there. So.
But the base, the base is something and then the base determines the height of the pyramid.
Correct.
How high will the pyramid be when they acquire the next spot?
This base and that base couldn't connect because there's a stream in, in.
So they can still have, you can have three nine hundred and sixty foot mountains of trash.
I, I, I don't know anything about the linear trust property, so I don't think I can speak.
I went to see.
About that. I, I don't, I don't deny that you do. I just don't know about that.
But anyway, I wanted to read something. We talked about trash coming from everywhere. The solid waste, solid waste generated outside of Lamar County shall not be accepted by any solid waste handling facility for any current purpose without the solid waste handling facility, property holders and owners of the properties on which the solid waste han- handling facility is operated first had it executed a fee agreement with Lamar County. That has never happened. So bringing in all this trash from all around the state and there's no fee agreement. Who's making all the money? Cedar Grove LLC and Amways.
Amways is making the money. They can't really transfer. Before it gets down here, they make it from there when it gets here.
I can't, I don't know the operating agreement terms, but I do know that Cedar Grove LLC slash Amways is a for-profit company.
And so why aren't they paying property taxes if they're for profit?
They don't own the land.
So they fall under the enterprise.
But I mean, I, I've worked, I've, I've worked for a living and so I, I get paid for what I do. So I would expect a for-profit company to also get paid for what they did.
So why is there no fee agreement with Lamar County when Amways is bringing in?
Again, I do not have the operating agreement and not familiar with operating agreements. So I'm sorry.
You're stripping off the citizens of the county. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry that you feel that way.
I do.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Right now. We're entertaining in, as an engineer, you're an engineer, right?
Yes.
Okay. And to do your math, can you ballpark a number of trucks? The landfill is seeing today or tonnage possibly. And if the site is approved in a year's time, and let's say the trucks are running into work on that one, will there be an increase in trucks slash tonnage? You, you're shaking your head like you're answering.
No, I was, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, okay. So again, today, how many trucks, how many tons? A year for now, it's just a permit, a year for now, you're filling up a new cell. Does the trucks increase, which of course equals tonnage increase? Is that in, do you see that happening if this new cell is put in place?
Uh, honestly, this is my opinion. I don't do the operating or the sales for the site.
I figured you would do that numbers.
Well, the numbers I do is how much life does this give them at their current rate? And so they could take no increase to truck traffic, no increased tonnage per day. And this gives them another fourteen years of.
Only fourteen years?
And so that's what, that's what we, at the current rate that they're taking.
At the current book.
Okay, well, okay. Ashley Gillis, so a couple of years ago, you know, and, and I think you need backstory for this to understand where the citizens are coming from. Johnny said, we've got sixty years left. We've got thirty years left.
Oh, we've got forty five years left.
And he even stated in, um, many cases that it goes up and down. So you're saying with opening those two cells on the west side and on the east side, opening up those two for the permit is.
up those two for the permit is only gonna give it, how many years of site left, site?
The, adding this area and adding this area will give it about fourteen.
Eight years.
At the current rate that they're taking.
Okay.
Uh, now, I think before they signed the operating agreement, they took about two-hundred tons a day, a hundred and fifty to two-hundred tons a day.
It was fairly minimal.
Uh, and they take more than that now.
They're, they're bringing in eighteen wheelers now every day, one after another, so. I'm assuming that. He probably knows the figure.
I know exactly the figure.
It's a lot. A lot more than Johnny Ford was over it, actually.
Well, you know, what we do have a loan that the citizens of this county, that the commissioner's co-sign for the citizens.
For, for what?
And it's a thirty, the Jifa loan is a thirty-year term.
And what's that loan for?
So you said, you, for twenty-seven and a half million dollars.
No, I mean, what is it, what does the loan pay for? I don't.
The loan pays for nothing, because there is nothing out there.
Waste of fuel project.
Okay, the waste of fuel project.
Okay, this is smirnland though expansion.
I understand, but you know what? They're all contiguous, they're all connected. Right? So, Mr. President, no, I just wanna understand. There is an Amways agreement signed on July the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, I have a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay? Forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars a month to basically, isn't worth the lease, fill up the landfill, seventy thousand dollars to process the leachate. So that only pays the loan payment. It's a thirty-year loan. You said there's about two years left on what they have, and this will only give them fourteen more. Then they're gone, and the citizens of the county are responsible for that loan?
Again, I don't know the terms of the loan or the operating agreement. I'm sorry, that's, I'm, all I can, all I can help you with is the expansion project.
Why doesn't Amways buy the whole thing? Take it over?
I, I don't, I don't.
I mean, and he's the only one making money? He's got lots of money, let him buy it.
Yeah, I, I don't do their business, no. Yes, sir?
When Elaine and myself and.
I'm sorry, would you?
Hair Jack.
Thank you.
Oh, when Elaine and myself were out to visit the, uh, Jackie Force a couple of years back, he told us then that the current landfill was going to last sixty more years, and that's hoped.
But that was before they signed an operating agreement with Cedar Grove.
He never told us there was an operating agreement with Amways. We saw him in twenty-three, the agreement was signed in twenty-one, nobody knew about it.
I can't, I can't speak to your conversation we had, I'm sorry, all right.
I'm sure the attorney used to.
Mister, mister, you know, they're the smartest guys in the room, they know all this.
Any other questions about the expansion or about how MSW landfills work? Yes, sir?
If there was an accident punch in the liner itself, I'm concerned about well water in the community.
Sure.
Uh, how would you address that?
Um, so.
Chemical support.
The liner, the, the plastic liner is actually like a bonus. The actual liner is the soil liner, which is two feet of ten to the minus seven clay, uh, and what that means is, um, ten to the minus seven centimeters per second at a certain head will go through at a certain rate.
Is that gonna filter?
Um, it, it's not supposed to act as a filter. Uh, let me get back to this other one. It's not supposed to act as a filter, it's supposed to act as a barrier. The filter is a ball of the plastic, and so that's where the leachate collection happens. So hopefully, if there were a puncture in the liner, it's already been carried off anyway. But if it did puncture the liner, then it would have to go through here, um, the, the clay liner, and the distance to the groundwater is what EPD takes into account. The law says it has to be five feet above the groundwater, so the length of time it takes, um, and it depends on what, which part of Georgia you're in, and, and, uh, the soil that's in the native soil, and that's what all the drillings and borings are for, um, is because there is a calculation to talk about the movement and transmissivity of that soil.
You're telling us the leach water that there is collected and take, or is it, is it directly put in where the, uh, weigh station is, that the big tanks out there?
Yes.
Is it gonna be piped into that directly, or are you gonna haul it back and forth?
It's, it's being hauled right now. So it's, it's hauled out of there and inspections of the tanks and hauling that leachate out is part of the operations plan and has to be done, um, under EPD's regulations.
How many feet between groundwater and the liner?
Uh, between the bottom of the liner and the groundwater is required to be five feet, um, but it, most places it's deeper than that just because of the geometry of the site.
I've got an additional question.
All right.
And it's gentleman stated about odor earlier. Um, you may or may not know the answer. Air quality control units, do you know if there is any surrounding property, and if so, how many?
What kind of air quality control units?
Well, I mean, you, you've got a landfill, you've got the intercom building, they're burning leachate, I call it lung of smoke, steam, whatever you wanna call it, you know, I don't know if this all applies to ground permitting, or does it take in accordance air quality as well? Are there any mo, excuse me, is there any air monitoring devices that you know of, you know, because I mean, you have knowledge, you don't have knowledge, do you know of any?
All right, first of all, let me split those two apart. The intercom building is not part of the landfill expansion, it's on the other side of Industrial Road, so the leachate evaporator and the waste of fuel is not part of this project, so I don't know what they do on their air quality, but I know that they probably have to have an air quality permit. At landfill, they have, uh, air quality that they have to monitor if they have gas collection nets and wells in there, and so just like they do semi-annual groundwater and quarterly methane when they have an air permit, it's a separate side of EPD than the solid waste management program. Title V air permitting is a whole different animal, uh, so that's done differently.
And would that be under the direction of the EPD and not a, a business or a company or whatever? Would the EPD for air quality monitoring, do they come in and, you know, this says a hundred acres, they say you can have one, two, three, four, whatever, how many? Do they set the mark for how many air quality units have to be put out?
EPD would approve the plan, but they don't actually do the testing, a, a third party would do the testing and submit it to EPD, just like they do with groundwater and.
Okay, okay, thanks.
One more question, James Hyde.
I don't believe you, but go ahead.
This is, uh, this is just, uh, uh, this is not the actual landfill site, this is just.
This is just a, uh, antypical.
Okay, so has there been any study done, uh, with the amount of radon that is underneath the soil and the bedrock that, and what will happen to that radon when you start disturbing that land?
I do not know about radon testing at this land. So that's, that question will go on the record, but I don't know the answer to it. Yes, sir?
Why don't we have a vote that everybody stands against this?
You are welcome to do that, uh, but this, this is not a voting, this is not a.
I realize, anybody, but, but they need to know there's opposition.
Okay.
Everybody's against it, please stand.
Now, um, Elaine, if you would like to count those people, because otherwise the court reporter.
I only got ten fingers. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty from one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, myself is at least twenty-seven, and I might miss one or two.
You may count twice.
I would say that you would have ninety more than ninety percent of the proponents against it. How's that sound?
Well, typically, people who aren't against it don't come to the meeting, so, but that's, um, if you would like to come up to the map, uh, and see if you have any questions up close, I know this is fine print. I mean, if you.
I got one more question if you get two.
If you would, but hold on, let me say this, if you would like to come up and look close at the map and if you have any other questions, and also to sign up on the.
If anybody who hasn't signed up yet and wants to, feel free to sign up.
Are y'all going to go through the people that are on the list, or is it just turned into a roundtable?
At this point, we're gonna turn it to just the people on the list, that's why I'm giving everybody a further opportunity to sign up again.
The, the property, you were saying the liner has to be five foot of distance between the water line? With the property that you're talking about digging out, have you already done a soil sample? Have a soil sample come out and punch it out and see how deep it goes?
Yes.
Cause I know you're gonna have to get some fill dirt out of there, are you gonna have to add some fill dirt before you have your distance?
I don't think there's anywhere that we have to add fill to get the five-foot separation because it's easier to just not go that high in that area. Um, and part of the H A R, that study that we did, we have to drill holes all over the property and see how deep it is, and that's part of the reason the process takes so long is because we usually.
There is some wetlands back there, am I correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There is some wetlands back there.
There are some wetlands on the property, that's correct. And we cannot dispose in any wetlands without, uh, federal permitting, so, or flood lanes or anything like that.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to sign up for public comments?
Yeah, that property is on the, on that, Q public doesn't always show correctly, but that's, that's the point.
Okay, how many of these do they have? Are you probably?
Come on.
So where do they go at the end of fourteen?
They say they pop them in. I mean, they haven't permitted to, they're not gonna answer that, so I don't know.
They hit for me, I mean, like Elaine said, they're doing a whole lot of years left ahead, and ways you just walk away. So they, so we're held hostage, and we have to, they have to. Someone else thought it was crying.
That's Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
Yeah.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
So they, so we're held hostage, and we have to, they have to.
I went on a trip.
Somebody else thought it was crying.
That's Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
Yeah.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
That's Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
Yeah.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
I know that one has.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
They're all linked to the same thing, and, and walls and stuff, so.
What's his name, Rob?
Dale and Luke.
We wouldn't go with this together, we'd be wild.
Christmas.
So bad, or really not bad.
We went out and done another trip.
Santa Claus tree.
Oh, really? I think you get a couple of those to a Christmas.
Mr. Richards is gonna call on those who've signed up, gonna make the public comment, and I'm gonna sit down, so I have something to hand you in question, I'll be happy to get back up.
So we've got eleven folks on our public comments sheet. Uh, as you make the public comment, if you can come forward for the court reporters, that is it, cause she's gotta take it all down, but if you're sitting in the back, we need you to come forward so that she can hear. Uh, please limit your comments, uh, to ten minutes or less, and, uh, we'll make our way through these. First on the list is Jason Lovett at eleven ninety-eight Brown Road, Griffin, Georgia.
I'd like to start off by saying in thirty-five years of being in this industry, I've attended dozens of these meetings, this is the first one I've ever been in, that there's not a member of the EPD. I find that very disheartening. I stand for you not just as a citizen, but as, but also as county commissioner for Lamar Second District, with granted authority to speak on behalf of District One, Three, and Four, making this statement the unified voice of Lamar County, the host local government. Cedar Grove landfill was originally created to meet the needs of our community for what was promised as the next hundred years, yet three years after Amways gained operational control, they are here seeking an expansion. This statement alone should be disconcerting enough to nullify any requests being made here tonight. Unfortunately, that is the tip of the iceberg. Lamar County is currently involved in three lawsuits with the Solid Waste Authority and Amways, one state and two federal, regarding the troublesome activities at our landfill. The legal environment is so toxic that the high-level Superior Court Judge took the, took the extraordinary measure of assigning a special master, Senator and Lieutenant Governor Candidate John Kennedy, to unravel this mess. We are currently awaiting his final report, a report that could very well force the SWH to return to a five-year board as outlaw, outlaw, outlined in their own bylaws, challenge the legality of Amways' no-bid contract for Cedar Grove, and compel compliance with state-mandated tipping fees. Yes, you've heard that correctly, even though tipping fees are enshrined in state law. To compensate counties for litter cleanup and repair of damaged roads, Amways has yet to pay a single dime. As spokesman for the entire Lamar County Board of Commissioners, I ask that no changes or expansions be allowed to the. and repair of damaged roads, Amways has yet to pay a single dime. As spokesman for the entire LaMora County Board of Commissioners, I ask that no changes or expansions be allowed to the Cedar Grove landfill until all legal issues have been resolved by the courts. Thank you. I yield back the balance of my time.
Next is Donald Horton, five oh seven Old Milner Road.
My name is Donald Horton, five zero seven Old Milner Road. Uh, he's really close to me on Old Milner Road, so, uh, I have smelled it from time to time. I'll say that. Uh, I see a lot of smoke blowing from their waste fuel project. Uh, on something that was printed in our local organ, I guess we'll call it, Herald Gazette. The work of Cedar Grove Landfill has set become North America's proving ground for emerging waste to green energy technology. Okay? See, supporters say the biosphere process has been proven endure and in China can reduce the volume of waste by, reduce the volume of waste by as much as ninety-three percent. Yeah, this talks about the waste fuel project, which is ongoing. But if we're supposed to reduce it ninety-plus percent, why are we having an expansion? And that's what I don't get. Uh, I won't be truthful with you. The expansion is a money grab. Somebody wants to make money. Tell me there's not a person in this room that doesn't like money. I like money, I'd like to have more money. But that's all this is. To me, we need to make some more money. Why does everybody bring in their waste to here? We shouldn't have it, you know? And again, here's another one. This is March two thousand and thirteen. Reduce the impact on the environment by potential ninety percent and more. Instead of building new waste cells at a cost of fourteen billion, it can produce revenue from garbage by turning it into fuels. Still ain't happening. I mean, what we're going with this, in my opinion, we're going in expansion. We're hearing county promises, or promises to the county in regards, this is what this project's gonna do. We spent twenty-seven point five on a loan. It still not working. This stuff, if you draw my property line to the Intercon property line, three hundred feet, I'm surprised my elders who've been in this area for over three hundred years allow the industrial part to go there. When the Intercon built it, I used to hunt. Beautiful land. Now here's a building where the failed projects must be working in it. I, I hate to see failures. Promises that are carried through. To me, this could be another promise. But what we've heard denying, this ain't gonna take long to fill up. But if we were just taking our own trash and not having it come in from Spalding County and other counties, and folks, I see this all day long. The roads are getting tore up. There's, within the past thirty days, there've been two rollover accidents going into the dump. One big Spalding County truck and another one making a left into, before you go into the dump area. Slick roads, hazardous roads, tearing our roads up. We don't need more light patrol trucks. We don't need more garbage here. You know, I think the E P D, I think, needs to see some proof in the pudding before they allow an expansion. The banister of the E P D, Johnny Porter, that's calling the man. So the E P D and some of our past commissioners on a project that was supposed to take care of our county and reduce our waste input, waste input, our landfill. Give us more years, we live here. It's not. We gotta build new cells. He got up, he's got close to, I think, it's five hundred acres out there. What's that gonna be like for, you know, I got grandkids. When I, when I pass away, one of the kids is, one of my kids is getting the house. Who's it going to? I had to worry about looking at the trash mountain. And yeah, I can see it and other people see it. We don't need that in our county. You know, um, that's pretty much it. I think E P D needs to listen to the folk, our folks here in the county, and take us for what we're worth. And I don't think this, this project needs to go through. I don't think the permit needs to go through. Let's see some fill promises first before we decide, hey, let's expand it. You know, it's easy, oh man, we got all this land, we get, let's dig another hole and bring it in. You know? Amways to whoever you're, you're not paying for, with all due respect. You're not fixing industrial drive. It's being tore up. I don't know how many times you go out there. I mean, it was muddy down today. Y'all wonder, just put a little bit more water out there, whoever does on the, on the roadway and just make more mud. I go through it twice a day, so I know what it's like. Don't live in a landfill, but I go through it. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Elaine Halada, one thirty-one Stiefel Chase.
Before I start, Mr. Richards, when, when was this voted on by the Lamar County Solid Waste Authority Board to go through or to be, be a proposed expansion? When was it voted on by the Lamar County Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors?
It would have been back in two thousand and one. No, I don't think so.
To expand.
Two thousand, sorry, two thousand and twenty-one. Two thousand and twenty-one.
So two thousand, in July the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one, through open records, there is a solid waste authority plan. You're saying that's when it happened? How coincidentally did, suddenly did Amways get a contract two days later on July the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one? Why didn't the open records I got from the Solid Waste Authority, didn't Mr. Russell and the other cahoots, as far as I'm concerned? Why were they attending Solid Waste Authority meetings perent to that? Was this not a long-range plan? Because sure seems like it. Okay? I mean, I'm, I'm astounded. I, there's nobody in this room that wants it, like you said. No one's gonna show up that wants it except for the people that are gonna make money from it. The engineers, Mr. Russell, Amways. And the other people that are for this, people of this county do not want to see Trader or Trash Mountain grow any bigger or any wider. Plus, we have this whole set of rules. Two thousand and eight dash oh-two, read them. You can buy it through open records, I did. The Solid Waste Authority has never followed their own rules. And Amways is not following them today. I am totally against this expansion.
Next up is Harold Jackson, two hundred Borl Drive.
I don't live in the county, I live in the city. I went out to, to the dump one day to dump some trash. And this is how Elaine was doing the same thing. I can't find, and I found out I could not dump my garbage out there. One reason, even though I'm paying county taxes, one reason was the city opted out. I didn't opt out, I'm paying county taxes. That's one reason this mess has turned into the mess it's in right now. Yes, I am against this expansion. We were told by Johnny Porter, Elaine and I, uh, went out and took the place. Uh, he, Johnny can give you a spell. Anyway, uh, we saw some of the old equipment that was supposed to be already installed fourteen years ago. So, we're a little bit behind. And if they all this equipment, they may not even need anything. Johnny Porter told, told us, we got sixty years left on the current landfill. All right, now they want more land to put all the garbage out there. Thank you very much.
Next up is Truman Boyle, twelve nineteen Highway thirty-sixth East in Barnesville.
I'm one of the commissioners, Lamar County Commissioners District four of this mess. It was in my district. Over the last two, three weeks, I've had numerous calls on trash being thrown all up and down Lamar County roads. There appears, we're supposed to, seventeen hundred, fifteen hundred tons a day of little pickled trash coming to Lamar County. OCGA Georgia Law twelve, that's eight, that's thirty-nine states, which is received between a dollar and two dollars and fifty cents per ton, per day. That's thirty tons a month we're getting of little pickled trash. As the commissioner, I think I speak for my entire district, we're totally opposed to any expansion of this landfill.
Next up is Brent Rogan, six twenty-six Old Milner Road, Barnesville.
So, um, my wife and I actually own the land that borders a landfill. Um, we lived there for about twenty years. And before Amways took over, we never had this smell. Um, you know, living right by a landfill, you expect some smell, but, but it was fine until, until Amways took over. And now, you know, it's not every day, but there's many days it is just overwhelming and we just are told that if there's any kind of expansion, anything can be worse. It's just, it's just tough on the family that lives up close. And we're totally against it.
Next up is James Hyde, one sixteen Whiteup Drive, Jackson, Georgia.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity. These comments are expressly toward our fulfillment of the E P D. I'd like to address several legal and constitutional issues concerning the Solid Waste Management Authority and the application currently before the E P D. First, the foundation of this matter rests with the Georgia State Constitution, Article Two, Paragraph One, which says, "All government," and I repeat, "all government of right originates with the people and is founded upon their will only and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. Public officers are trustees and servants of the people and are at all times amenable to them." This constitutional mandate makes one point unmistakably clear. All government entities exist only through the will of the people and remain accountable to them at all times. Secondly, OCGA twelve dash eight dash fifty-three, which sets up the Solid Waste Authority, uh, defines it as this, "A public body, corporate, and politic created in and for each county and municipal corporation in this state." The phrase "public body, corporate, and politic" is a long-recognized term of art in Georgia law signifying a government entity. One whose creation, powers, and continued existence are directly tied to the sovereign authority of the people. Therefore, the S W A is unquestionably a government body and cannot operate independently from the will and the oversight of the citizens of Lamar County and the City of Milner. Nor can it divorce itself from us as an independent entity, even by claiming that this is all over the auspices of their contracted employee, the Cedar Grove Landfill, i.e. Amways. Third, in many public discussions over years surrounding the S W A, I have yet to hear one single citizen who is not financially connected to the S W A stand up and speak in favor of its conduct in recent years. Any action taken by a governmental authority without the approval, transparency, and competence of the citizens it serves contradicts the Constitution and the laws of the state. Fourth, the S W A has, has been and is currently in violation of a statutory requirement to maintain registration with the Department of Community Affairs. I checked this today. They only filed this required registration in two thousand and twenty-three because again, in a forum like this, it was brought to their attention. But eight years prior to that and the two years since that, they have failed to register. Failure to fulfill such a basic legal obligation demonstrates significant mismanagement and raises concerns about the competence of the authority to undertake this project. Additionally, G F A has previously dispersed funds to the S W A while it was out of compliance with these registration requirements, which is explicitly prohibited by law. I strongly urge the Environmental Protection Division not to compound this violation by approving any action that lacks the support of the citizens and would further enable the authority to already, who was already operating outside the boundaries of the law. Fifth, as previously mentioned, the S W A is involved in multiple multimillion dollar lawsuits. Sixth, the authority also lacks a functioning legally constituted board. If you don't believe me, just attend one of their meetings. Individuals representing themselves as board members include persons who are not legally seated, rendering the governing body effectively non-functional. A measure such as this cannot proceed until it has gone before and been approved by a legal board of directors. Given the unresolved litigation, the illegality of the board's composition, and the authority's history of statutory non-compliance, it would be extraordinarily irresponsible to approve this application at this time. Until the courts resolve the outstanding legal issues and the S W A demonstrates full statutory compliance and a properly seated governing board, this application must be denied.
Good job, Dean.
Next up, last name is, looks like Gore, I cannot read the first name.
Dean Gore.
Dean?
Our name is Dean Gore, I'm on Five Points Road for seventy-six. Been here forty years in this community, Five Points Road. I've had more people be the old man of the street, call me and say, Dean, what have we done about the order? It's absolutely terrible, we have a wedding, then you down the road on Five Points, you went to do the place, taking fun with the other, then my home. I'm totally against the expansion of this project that I'm trying to do. I think the, so like, the numbers ain't right. One says fourteen years, the other one says sixty. I don't think they know with the right hand, with the left hand do it. Uh, we just need to get some real answers here. The gentleman did a great job, but there's a lot of gray areas. I appreciate it.
Dixie Benson.
She had to leave.
She left. Chipper Gardner. Two twelve Wilson Road in Milner.
Yes, uh, I live not too far from the landfill. Uh, been in Lamar County for about six or seven years now. Came to Lamar County right when all of this was starting to unfold. Uh, as a person that tries to look at things logically, I'm not trying to say one side's justified in their opinions and another one's not or whatever. But there are a lot of unanswered questions that either the legal folks or somebody needs to provide to citizens. Because right now, the citizens have a real, real big heartburn and mistrust for everything that's going on. If you could provide answers, it might resolve some of that. But my personal opinion right now, when the Solid Waste Authority and the counties and the cities have all this issue going on regarding the landfill, I don't think you need to be trying to take on another project. You can't take care of what's going on right now.
Amen.
You need to let the citizens know what's going on. And again, I'm not, I'm not condemning these folks over here that represent the landfill. I'm not, I'm not condemning anybody. But for somebody that's, that you just, you've got to let the people know what's going on. You've got to be transparent. And, and I think if that could happen and happen quickly, then you may not see a lot of opposition. You did a very good job with the presentation and you took some tough questions. But as you can see, there's a lot of pent-up frustration. It has nothing to do per se with this, but with things that have happened in the past. And I know that's not, but they're tied together. If you look at approval and not having any citizen upset about this, you gotta take care of this other first. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents. Uh, I think you could get a whole lot more done if you could get these other issues resolved before you start going forward with this. Thank you.
Teresa Boggs, eight sixty-two Five Points Road.
Trey Spoggs, I'm just way against this, it's Beijing, I've been living.
Teresa Ball, um, I'm just way a guest, this is Paige, and I've been living on Five Points Road, fifteen some meters, and smell the trash often, based on when it rains, and, um, my land looks up to it. Some of the land they purchased, uh, several years ago, and I'm just totally a guest, I don't want to say that. And I think the rest of them is dead and everything. Thanks.
All right. That concludes public comments. Now I'm going to explain the facilities issues negotiation process, which is provided for in the Georgia Solid Waste Act and is required by the Environmental Protection Division for this project. Again, a copy of the relevant sections from the Solid Waste Act containing the requirements for initiating the process and describing the process are provided, if you haven't picked up a copy of the one up here. To summarize, the process must be initiated by a petition submitted to the authority, addressed directly to my attention, business cards and contact information up here. That petition must be submitted within thirty days from today's date, which would make the deadline January seventh of twenty twenty-six. For that purpose, my address, like I said, is here on the cards. Um, note that I cannot provide you with legal advice regarding the process, which I'm about to summarize. That process is fully explained in the code section that we provided copies of. The petition must be signed, must be written and signed by at least twenty-five persons. Twenty of them must be registered voters or landowners in Lamora County. If a petition were received, once the qualifications of persons listed on the petition to participate in the process were validated, the person signing the petition would be notified by publication in the Herald Gazette that the fin, or facility issues negotiation process, would be initiated, including a date from initial meeting of a citizens' facility issues committee. That committee shall consist of up to ten members from the petitioner's group. Eight of whom must be registered voters or landowners in Lamora County and must be selected by the petitioner within fifteen days after notice by publication of the petition's validation. A facilitator would be selected to oversee the process, which would consist of a minimum of three negotiation meetings within a forty-five day period. Technical matters and environmental permit conditions would not be subject to negotiation. Negotiable issues could include points such as operational hours, recycling efforts, or traffic. The matters subject to negotiation are listed in the code section. At the end of the forty-five day period, any results of the process would be published, along with a notice of an opportunity for a public meeting at which input of persons not represented by the citizens committee may be received. It is anticipated that at the end of that process, the Environmental Protection Division would be notified of any results, if any, and requested to proceed with the final permitting process. The Environmental Protection Division does not participate in any respect in that process, and any matters that might be negotiated would not be included as part of the modified permit, as permit conditions. This concludes this public hearing. Again, a transcript of the public hearing will be prepared and submitted to the Environmental Protection Division with a copy provided by the Solid Waste Authority to Lamora County and the City of Milner. If you'd like to come up, get a copy of the statute, a copy of my contact information, thank you all for your time.